I will call this meeting to order. Here.
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 Please join me in a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time Carol Nowakowski will come and speak about the Lake Havasu City Education Association.
Good evening. Ah, there we go. All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Directors, Dr. Stone. Next week is American Education Week for 2024. It's celebrated November 18th through the 22nd. Monday is the kickoff day. Tuesday is Family Day. So we encourage educators to invite parents into the classroom to experience. We always appreciate the opportunity to per-- oops, that's not. Um, okay. Wednesday, November 20th, is Educational Support Professional Day. The Association will be doing something at each site to recognize our educational support staff. Thursday is Educator for the Day. On this day, we encourage our schools to reach out to our community leaders and invite them to experience a day as an educator. And then Friday is November 22nd is Substitution Educators' Day. As we know, our substitute educators play a vital role in our continuing of our daily education. These professional educators provide a critical link in the education of public school children by serving as a bridge to provide continued quality education to children when staff is temporarily absent from the classroom. So we are hoping that you'll join us in celebrating each one. Again, Family Day, we encourage, we know the partnership between our parents and our families is critical. And then Wednesday, Educational Support. And that includes everyone that's not a certified staff member. And then invite those from the public that are leaders on Thursday, and then Friday, our substitutes. Okay? Thank you.
And now we'll have Mrs. Bitterman come and talk about substitute recognition.
I also have Viviana Rowe here with me tonight. She's our substitute coordinator for the school district. This month, we recognize Substitute Educator Day across the nation, which, as you already heard from Ms. Nowakowski, is on November 22nd. We want to take a moment this evening to highlight the importance of our substitutes. The work of a substitute teacher is challenging and ever-changing, sometimes day-to-day, job-to-job, and even minute-to-minute. They serve as that vital bridge of instruction while our teachers and staff may need a day or more of leave. This could be for a bereavement, it could be for a planned or an unplanned medical leave of absence. It could be for military deployment reasons, for a spouse, there's a whole host of reasons why our staff need to take leave. And our subs make that possible. In addition to the teaching positions that our substitutes fill, they also support by covering hard-to-fill areas, including everything from the custodian to library to a personal care assistant for our special needs students. In the 23-24 school year, so last year, substitutes covered more than 28,000 hours of duty across all LHUSD campuses. That is a pretty staggering number. However, I would like to just take a moment to commend our staff for their improved attendance in the past year. We did see a reduction of 5,000 hours in substitute usage from '22-23 to '23-24, which saves the district approximately $100,000 in substitute wages and approximately 625 days of paid time off for our staff. I'd also like to celebrate this first quarter of school. While we had our students here in the buildings, we had 148 of our staff members achieve perfect attendance, which is pretty remarkable. A little bit more about our substitute program that Ms. Rowe coordinates. We have 94 certified substitutes and 33 support substitutes that keep our schools running on a daily basis. We are grateful for all of the substitutes who have joined our district and support the education of our students and the smooth operations of our district when our staff are off. Tonight, however, so we don't have over 100 people up here, we are specifically recognizing those substitutes who have supported our schools by serving 30 or more days in the first quarter of the school year. And a few of them were able to join us tonight. So if I call your name, I'm going to have our substitutes please come up to the front. Ms. Rowe will hand you a certificate and I'll ask that you remain standing so we can get a picture. Ms. Susan Spira, she's not able to be here tonight. She is a retired LHUSD educator. Ms. Haley Jackson. Mr. Robert Williams. I thought I saw you back there. Come on up, Mr. Williams. No, don't apologize. We're glad you're here. Thank you for all you do for our schools. Also retired LHUSD educator and administrator, Ms. Corey Triasi. Ms. Brooke Endricks. A retired LHUSD employee, Mr. John Brazil. Ms. Jessica Aldridge. Ms. Lori Martin. Ms. Crystal Perez. Mr. George Bridenthal. And Ms. Kim Helberg. All right. If you would all join me in offering these outstanding substitutes a round of appreciation for their service. And if you can squeeze on in there so we all fit in that picture, that'd be great. Thank you all.
This evening, we have a call to the public. Amber, please come to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Amber Vian. Just to see how we can move this forward and start that collaboration.
So there are some specific things that we have talked with your organization about in terms of the MOU. And those things have yet to be worked out. So if you want to continue to work with Mr. Moss on that, but until that happens, it would not come before the Board until we can come to agreement on those specific pieces.
Great. When I took over, the people who had been working have left. So I'm kind of stuck, like figuring out where we left. And so I was coming here tonight to try and like make an introduction. And being a collaborative partner, I'm hoping I put four children through the school district. I'm a graduate of the school district as well. So I know that working with the school district is a huge part in moving forward to support our kids. So are you, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Can I exchange information with you before I leave this evening?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept it as stated?
I move to accept.
I will second.
Chair of the Board? Yes. Ms. Eric Carron?
Yes.
Ms. R. Monroe? Yes. Chair of the Board?
Yes.
All right. Student Achievement Portrait of a Graduate, Dr. Festa Dagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, I'm here to present the Portrait of a Graduate that we have been working on since January. And so, Mrs. Bitterman, we'll pull up the PowerPoint and I'll share it. So we've been working on a portrait of a graduate since January, really, working to define what it is in terms of skills and competencies we want to see our students graduate with. We hear it, schools all across the country hear it, like, "These kids, when they graduate, graduate, they can't blah, blah, blah." And so we really want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community and making sure that our students are ready for life after high school. And so this plan was co-created with over 40 residents of Lake Havasu. We've worked to plan that process. We activated the team. We created the visual, and now we're really looking to move that portrait forward and implement what we have decided. And so our driving questions were, what are the hopes, aspirations, and dreams that our community has for young people? And so really thinking about what do we want in our students after high school? What are the skills and habits of mind that our children need for success in this rapidly changing and complex world? And what are the implications of the learning experiences we provide in our school system? And so our goal was to really define the skills, knowledge, and character traits that our students needed, whatever their choice was post-high school, whether they were looking for additional education, career, and just in general, life after they leave us. And so we see portraits of graduates used at school systems across the country. And it is really used in a number of ways. It creates shared vision, it guides decision and practices, it develop-- we use it to develop programs, curriculum, and learning experiences. We respond to community needs, we transform learning, and it's a roadmap. And so you'll see some of the things that the community came up with. And so really ensuring that the education that we're providing meets those needs. So there was a 43-member team. It was made up of superintendent, current board members, members of the Board as of January. There was one member on it. District administrators, site administrators, the chamber CEO, the PED director, college leaders from community college and university, parents, students, teachers, counselors, CTE administrator, the service club rotary president was on there, the police chief, the fire chief, the mayor, city council member, the business community, and alumni. And so this was a very large group that came together to help define what we were looking for in our graduates. So this process began in January of this year. We held our first meeting in February. And again, we had representation from many, many leaders from across the community. In March, our focus was to listen to students. And so a lot of times, we define what high school looks like from adult eyes. And so we really had the opportunity to listen to students and then also very recent alum. We listened to students who had just graduated recently about the experiences that they had in our schools. And we identified and named key areas of focus. In April, we finalized the statements and we suggested visualizations. Over the summer, a graphic artist designed what those visualizations would be. So that way, we can use this to share with the community on our website, in awards that we give students. And so we ended up having Shannon Kroll. She is a teacher at the high school, and she is also a Lake Havasu High School graduate. And I think that speaks really about who we are looking for and who we're preparing our stu-- what we're preparing our students for. And so then we came together in August to give it one more go-ahead. And now we are sharing it with the Board so we can begin implementation. And so as a reminder, the vision, the mission that our Board has previously established is that we will engage each student with a focus on scholarship, character, and humanity, so that all students may graduate with the academic and social skills necessary to become responsible citizens and contributing members of society. And so that is the work that we do. And so really thinking, well, what are those academic and social skills that leads them to be those responsible citizens and contributing members? So this is starting to define that. So these are the visuals that were developed. There are six areas that I'll talk about. We wanted to really focus on our school colors. And then really thinking, if you look at the graduate in the middle, we wanted to incorporate the bridge and Arizona. And so really thinking that that is a graduate, that cute little graduate. We can put students' faces in there, but really thinking about, these are the things that are coming together that are helping our students bridge to adulthood. So these are the areas of focus that the team, and again, large team made up of a cross-section of the community. These are the skills and competencies that this team has said that we are really looking for in our students. And how are we ensuring that the coursework and the curriculum that we are using are leading to this? And it's important to note that this is not a Lake Havasu High School portrait of a graduate. We don't get students to practice emotional intelligence or work towards a common goal starting in ninth grade. This is going back to thinking, how are we providing opportunities for students to do these things early on? So we ensure that they're graduating with the skills and competencies necessary. So the first one was collaborator. We are looking for students and we're preparing students to embrace productive struggle, practice emotional intelligence, be adaptable and confident, and work together toward a common goal. So really thinking about, and I think we've heard it, that students are willing to give up. How do we ensure that students are willing to embrace that struggle, to work through hard problems, to come to that consensus, and to work together as a team toward a goal? Communicator. Articulates thoughts clearly, both verbally and in writing. So how are we developing articulate students who can both read, write, speak clearly and really ensure that that communication is clear? Uses constructive language to manage conflict, listens actively and attentively, and exercises advocacy for self and others. So we want to ensure that our students are able to participate in conversations, to talk with others, and to do that respectfully and being considerate of who's around them. Content expert. Demonstrates competency of academic standards. So we want students who know things. And specifically, we're prioritizing skills and career and technical education, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, STEM, and/or fine arts. So we want to ensure that we are supporting students in these areas early on. And we've spent a lot of time talking about CTE in high school. How are we bringing that back to middle school, to elementary school? Really thinking about what those skills are. Understand civic, financial, and digital literacy. So being literate in these areas. One thing that came up was financial literacy. And so we know that, again, in high school, we have students that focus on financial literacy through math of money and through economics. But how are we making sure that they have those opportunities to think about that? In elementary school and middle school, we're meeting with Junior Achievement tomorrow to look at a community business experience. And then modeling healthy behaviors. So really thinking about knowing their own wellness and how to make healthy food choices and those things. Creative and critical thinker. Engaging in problem-solving, respecting diverse perspectives, applying critical thinking, and making informed decisions. So really developing learners that are thinking, they're not just consuming information. They're thinking hard about that information. Community builder. Developing professional skills, implementing a career action plan, gaining hands-on experience, practicing time management, accountability, and organization. So how do we ensure that students who are leaving our school are prepared to be members of the community and do those things that we want that are adults to do? And so some of these areas are those work-based skills. Civic contributor. Engaging in service to the community, being civically engaged, demonstrating ethical and empathetic behavior, and valuing both individual rights and responsibilities. And so really thinking about the reason for public school. The founders really focused on having civic, civically literate people because we have a participatory government. And so we see this now. We saw it yesterday on Veterans Day. We saw every school doing something for Veterans Day, from volunteering at the Veterans Day parade to writing letters to veterans. We saw it last week. Many of the schools had mock elections for favorite cookies. And so really thinking about how we're prioritizing students as civic contributors. And so those were the areas that the team really wanted to focus on, ensuring that we were covering. And so thinking, you know, one of the areas was fine arts. How do we ensure that students have access to fine arts at all levels? How are we making all of those things a priority in what we're doing? And so our next step is illustrating how it's already being applied in our schools. Many of these things are already happening, we just haven't talked about it. How are we supporting financial literacy, having students be critical thinkers? What are we doing well and what can we improve? Identify new opportunities for a portrait of a graduate to be embedded in our schools. So are there areas where, we said this was important, but maybe we don't see it as much. So are there things that we can elevate? Engaging with stakeholders to support LHUSD students. There are many people in this community that are interested in opportunities to mentor and provide guidance. So how do we ensure that students have access to mentorship that's focused on development of productive members for our community? Communicate with post-secondary partners about student successes, but also about areas of need. So as we're communicating with our post-secondary partners, how are we measuring if our students are meeting those goals? Are they coming, whether it's to MCC or to university? Are they coming equipped with what they need to be successful? Are students entering the workplace with what they need to be successful? Do we have students who aren't able to write articulately or communicate articulately? And if that's the case, what can we do to ensure that we do in the future? Elevate student voice. The group really was impressed by the students. There were three students on the group who really could talk articulately about what they needed. One of the areas is, they said, "Teachers talk a lot to us all day long, and we don't have as much time as we want to really share the answers and talk about it amongst ourselves." And so how are we ensuring that students have that opportunity to struggle and give us feedback on what we're doing well and what we can do better? Align resources. So again, we prioritized things like STEM, fine arts, CTE. How are we aligning our resources, time, dollars, with this? And then use for strategic planning. Again, this was, this was a large group that came together. And so how can we use this as beginning with the end in mind? We know that graduation is one area. But how, what are the other things that exist that we can backward plan to make sure that our students are being successful? And so the schools have started this conversation. One of the things that we are going to do is start recognizing students who are excelling in these areas. We know we have them. We have students who are excellent civic contributors, excellent communicators. And so how can we define that and elevate those students that are doing well and share those successes with the community? And I look forward to continuing to work through, ensuring that all of our students are meeting these goals to better prepare themselves to be Lake Havasu City and beyond residents and community members.
All right. Thank you. We'll have you speak also about the school letter grades. Okay. Discussion?
I don't really have too much to add, only to say thank you for including me on that. It was a pleasure to be able to work with so many community members. There was a lot of back and forth over verb tense agreement on some of these bullet points. It was, it was a good time to talk about what our students are doing really well and the types of things that we want to encourage and make sure that we're promoting in the future. So thank you for, thank you to our leadership for organizing that. And thank you to all of the community members who were able to participate.
Okay. All right. School letter grades? Yep.
Madam President and Governing Board, so now I'm going to tell you how we're currently doing in the context of school letter grades. So last year, when I presented this, I presented it with post-secondary data from the four-year state universities and the community colleges. That data hasn't been released yet, so I do not have that data to share yet. Next week, we're going down to the Helios Center. One of our chemistry teachers did, had, did so well, her students were doing so well. When they got to the university, she was asked to sit as part of ASU's team to really focus on what schools are doing well. And so we're going down to look at what our community's needs are and how we are meeting those needs, and then what areas we can continue to improve on. So we don't have the post-secondary data, but it will be released soon. So I am going to start with the data that we have, really specific to K-2. Last month, I presented on our literacy plan and the work that we're doing to really ensure that all students are able to read no later than third grade. And really, our focus is that every student is reading on grade level by the time they leave elementary school. And so the state assessment data does not start till third grade, and so we don't have state assessment data. But what we do have is DIBELS. And I've shared this data before. This is last year's data from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And so what you're looking at is beginning-of-the-year data. So this data is all of our students within the first three weeks of school. And so you can see that 61%, so 2023-24, 61% of our kindergarteners are coming to us well below benchmark for kindergarteners in basic literacy skills, letter recognition, sound recognition, so just very basic skills. And that's compared to, and the DIBELS test is given nationally. There's some other tests, but it's given to hundreds and thousands of kids across the nation. You can compare that to 42%. So our students are really coming in quite a bit lower. We have 20% more students coming in well below compared to the national average. And you can see that students who are coming in at benchmark, so what we would expect kindergarten students to come in with, at benchmark and above benchmark, 19% compared to 38% across the nation. So we know that students are coming to us, whether it is a lack of early childhood education in the community, a lack of preschool. We know that students are coming to us in kindergarten lower. But what we see, and again, this is beginning-of-the-year data, so this is a pretty dramatic difference. By the time we get to third grade, so we only see a 2% difference here, 6% difference, 5%, we can see that our teachers are closing the gap. You know, these students, we can guess, the first graders have been with us for a year, the second graders, the third graders have been for us, many of them, for a few years. We can see that we're closing the gap. And we can see that by third grade, and these are different students, but by third grade, we have 56% of our students who are at-- we have 56% of our students who are at and above benchmark compared to 54% at the national average. So again, this is beginning-of-the-year data. So compare that to end-of-the-year. So again, this is students three weeks into school. This is a testing that is done at the end of the year. So this is going to be testing that's done in April and May. So already, we come down to, we are now only 4% lower than the nation. So you can see dramatic gains that our students are making in kindergarten because of the programming that we have, access to exceptional teachers, the work that's happening that school year is immense. You can see that by the end of the school year, 66% of our students are at and above benchmark compared to 68. So again, we've not quite caught up, but this is just one year, and we started with this pretty large deficit. And so then you can see, as we go forward in well below, we suddenly are below the national average in students who are lagging by the end of the year. And you can see that we are either above or very close to the national average in students who are at benchmark and above benchmark. We are at 70% at and above in first grade versus 67 at the nation, 67% above and at versus 62 nationally, and 55 and 56. So it's very close. So there's tremendous gains that are happening with our students in early literacy, and we know that that's the most important thing that we're focused on for primary school students. So that's really the data that we're very entrenched with when we're looking at K2, is ensuring that our students are learning to read. State does not assess that. That's, that's us. The state does require that we do literacy assessments, and the state does require that we use specific core reading materials. That is a requirement, that's their tightest area, is K2, K3 literacy. So now I'm going to present to you the state letter grades. So this is the state giving us letter grade data. Arizona revised statutes requires us to get, requires the state to give grades based on an A through F scale. It measures student academic growth proficiency on English Language Arts, Math and Science. It also measures the proficiency and academic growth of English language learners, ensures, indicators that should, ensure that an elementary student is ready for success in high school, and that high school students are ready to succeed in career or higher education. Just so everybody knows, this statute has been amended, and next year, we will be getting five letter grades from the state, one in every single area of proficiency. So the legislature decided that one letter grade was not enough. And so now we will have more letter grades in every single one of the areas. So we're just going to be looking at this one and this one. We do not have any alternative schools. This is the way that letter grades are focused on. I'll show you K8 separately from 912. 50% of K8 letter grades are in growth. We are really looking at, is the students, is the student growing? There's a focus on their learning, they're young, we want them to be growing, to what the state said, this is what a fourth grader should know in ELA, and this is what a fourth grader should know in math. There's standards that there's expected at every single grade level students should master, and so this is all measuring those standards as measured by the one state assessment. 30% is proficiency, 10% is acceleration readiness, and 10% is English learners. And then if you look at the high school, it's a little bit different. It's 30% proficiency, 20% growth, 20% graduation rate, 20% college and career readiness, and 10% English learners. But we'll talk about our K8 schools first. This is the life cycle. For everyone's like, "Oh, this letter grade just came out." Realize that we are able to calculate our letter grade and as soon as the summer. So as of the summer, we really had a good understanding of what our letter grade would be and where our students were doing in each of the areas, in each grade, in each classroom. And so we've been working since summer on reporting, planning, communicating with leaders to better meet the needs of students. We've been focused on, since school started, preparing students using those state standards and students who are in need of intervention, helping them get to that state-level standard in each of the areas. During the winter, we're again, we're focused on aligning to that, aligning the data to ensure we're doing the right thing, continuing to prepare students, and then communicating out to the general public about our letter grade. And then really, in spring, we're assessing. So this life cycle never stops. I know that it might seem like, "Oh, the newspaper reported the letter grade." It's not a surprise. We really, that life cycle really does not stop. We're, we're looking at how we did and then working to, to make it better. So now we'll talk about elementary schools. So the first area, so each of the schools, they all stay in the same areas. I used their school colors to the best of my ability, is the percent tested. So there has to be a minimum of 95% of students tested. And so all of the schools made that. So sometimes we hear parents say like, "They don't stop calling me." It is a requirement that we test 95% of the students. So, so that's, that's what we do to ensure that all our students. We also need to test 95% of each of the subgroups, so 95% of our special education students, 95% of our English learner students. So no subgroup can be lower than 95% either. So we're really focused on ensuring that every student takes their state-mandated test. So 30% is proficiency. So that is just measuring, do the students know, as measured by the Arizona State Assessment, are students proficient? Did they master that standard? And so we get points for students who are partially proficient, proficient, and then we get like bonus points for highly proficient. So our goal is to get students to proficiency for this area. So this is the proficiency points out of 30. And again, you can see the schools and their proficiency points. There's some fluctuation from year to year, but many schools have improved their proficiency over time, or they're close to it. And remember, remember, this is different groups of kids. So we're asking third graders to test, fourth graders to test. So when you're picturing like, this, this sounds very like, "Oh, these are students testing." These sometimes are eight and nine-year-olds that are taking this assessment when we're thinking about third graders, up through sixth graders. So last year's 2023 students are different than these 2024 students. There's new third graders, and the sixth graders have gone on to middle school. So these are not always, these are not the same students. And then growth. So we can get high growth, average growth, or low growth, and we get points for average and high growth. So even the students, so we want the students who were in minimally proficient, we want them to grow. So can we get them to partially proficient? Can we get them to proficient? Can we get them to highly proficient? Our students who are highly proficient, we're even looking for them to grow as well. Is their score improving? So we're looking for all students to grow wherever they were last year. Growth looks at one year. So I take my test as a third grader, how did I do as a fourth grader in ELA and math? So growth looks at year-over-year growth. So this is out of 50 points. You can see that we've made tremendous growth in the growth area. We've really been focused on, no matter where kids are coming in, how do we dial, dial in and provide intervention to keep improving? Or how do we provide enrichment so that our high students are growing as well? And so you can see, we've got schools that year upon year are getting 50. You can see we have schools that, two years ago, we were in the twenties, that are now at 50. So we've really made tremendous improvement in really digging down to what every student needs in the growth area with the goal of getting them all to proficiency. The English learner indicator, so this is proficiency for our English learners and growth. This is using a totally different test. It's called the AZELHA. So this is an assessment for English learning in the areas of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. In order to get points in this category, you have to have 10 students. We get points just for them hitting proficiency, so not, so no matter what level they come in at, and then growth. So if we get students who are pre-emergent, meaning that they cannot, they do not speak any English, the expectation is we get them to proficiency for points in that area, but we could also get points in growth for them. So you can see that there are schools that have NAs. It means that they don't have 10 students. But again, we've seen, you know, Sterling had zero points in 2022 to 10. And so really focusing on ensuring that our English learners are learning English as quickly as possible, and, and then growing, because it does take time sometimes. Acceleration and readiness. So the elementary schools get points here by reducing the number of students who are minimally proficient in reading in third grade. So we know that our goal is to ensure that students by third grade are able to read. And so we want to continue decreasing that minimally proficient number. We get points by decreasing chronic absenteeism, so ensuring that our students are coming to school, working with families to let them know the importance of coming to school. Subgroup improvement. So if, if subgroups, special education, English learner, male, female, white, Hispanic, African-American, two races, every subgroup that we can improve, we can get up to two points, assuming that we have at least 10 of that subgroup. And then special education inclusion, we get points by including our special education students in the general education classroom for a certain number of hours a day. So this is a maximum of 10 points. So you can see, again, we had schools a couple of years ago, some of them getting two, but really focusing on how do we increase that acceleration and readiness, really with a focus on decreasing that minimally proficient in literacy is a big one. We can also get bonus points if we enroll more special education students than the state, and then science proficiency. You can see each of our elementary schools' bonus points. And then here's our letter grades. And so we ended up with four schools that got an A this year and two schools that got a B. And so really, the celebration here is that increased growth year over year. One of the Bs was within half a point of an A, but really focused on that proficiency and growth in this, in the state standards, and making sure our students can do what they should be doing at each grade level. Okay. Middle schools assessed the same exact way. They get their letter grades the same exact way as K6. You can see they tested all of their kids, 99.48% kids. That's a celebration for middle school. Everybody put in your minds like what you were like in middle school, like that is a celebration, that those students are all coming in to take their self, their state assessment. Proficiency was 4.89, so really ensuring that those students are meeting grade-level standards. And again, this is tricky in middle school, because again, they're middle schoolers. So how do we ensure that those students are taking their assessments seriously, that their teachers really understand specifically what they're being asked to do to support that grade level? And so this is an area that we're really focused on at Thunderbolt. Growth, sixth grade to seventh grade, seventh grade to eighth grade. So how can we continue to improve their understanding at those grade levels? Else, Thunderbolt had at least 10 students, and so they got all 10 points because they were able to show proficiency and growth for their English learner students. Acceleration and readiness, they got eight and a half. Thunderbolt did increase the number of students who were highly proficient on eighth-grade math, and so really focusing on how do we decrease the number of students who are minimally proficient in eighth-grade math, knowing that that's the precursor. We want them to be algebra-ready by the time they, they leave Thunderbolt. They got two bonus points. Their letter grade was a C. And so we're working very closely to continue to improve their letter grade. So Lake Havasu High School looks a little bit different. We now changed the method that we're assessing. Celebration for Lake Havasu, they got 95%, and they got 95% in each of their subgroups. Lake Havasu High School, it looks a little bit different. They're not taking the AASIA anymore. Their students are taking ASPIRE in ninth grade. It's the pre-ACT, and then the ACT test, their junior year. Those are the two times they're tested. They also take a science test their junior year. It is no longer standards-based. The expectation is they're proficient. And so the ACT is the entrance assessment to colleges, and they've created cut scores that students are working toward. So proficiency, Lake Havasu High School got 19.04 points. You can see that they've improved every year. You can compare all of these points. You can look at any school across Arizona and compare. Lake Havasu High School had the second highest points in the county, and so you really can look school by school to see where we compare. If you're ever looking for something fun to do, just Google Arizona State Letter Grades, and you can compare, which I do. This is the first year of growth. So this is the first year where we have an ASPIRE test to the ACT, and Lake Havasu High School got 20 points. There were less than 20 schools that got the full 20. They did an incredible job. Mr. Becker really is focused on students increasing their ACT practice. They practice every year. They're really focused on understanding what they need to do to be successful, and so they got a perfect 20 for growth. They got all 10 points for their English learners. So they're really, this is showing that they're being successful in getting their students to proficiency and also helping their students grow in the English language. This is their graduation rate. We get points for everything up to seven years of graduation, and you go, "Oh my God, why? Why does it take seven years to graduate?" So the majority, the vast majority of students, we do want students to graduate in four years, but there are some cases where students have educational goals that extend beyond four years. So sometimes students will, they, special education students can stay until they're 21, and so there are some very small cases where that's appropriate. And so in those cases, they are counted. Because of this graduation data lags a year. So what we're looking at is really 22, 23 data. That becomes really difficult. So you're like chasing your graduation rate, but it's an old graduation rate. So that is a imperfection of the state accountability system. Lake Havasu High School got a perfect 20 for graduation rate. And then this is the CCR, CCRi. So this is the College and Career Readiness Indicator. This last 20 points is showing how our students are college and career-ready. And here, I'm sure you can read that out. Here's the, some of the ways that students can, can earn points. So they can earn a total of, every student can earn a total of 22 points, but some of the things that go in it? Complete a CTE sequence. So they're a CTE completer. They've completed all the courses. Surpass the cut score for ACT. Take and pass an advanced placement class. Complete their FAFSA. Pass a dual enrollment class in a core area. Surpass the ASVAB cut score. Take a placement test for community college. Earn a CTE credential. So this might be the CDA, your CPR, your OSHA, your CNA, your security endorsement. So this is earning a career credential. Interning and meeting all of the college entrance core requirements. The high school got 16.8, so they really have been focused on increasing the points that students are getting. that students are getting, giving them more opportunities for that. Here's all the ways that you can earn bonus points. The high school earned 6.5 bonus points. Their letter grade is an A. And so we really are proud to see the high school have back-to-back As. So last but not least, I'm going to talk about Havasu Online. Havasu Online has never gotten, they've never received a state letter grade. If you go on the Arizona Department of Education website, it says that schools that do not graduate students will not receive a letter grade, but when you read into the business rules, they will now. So Havasu Online does not graduate any students. Those students go back to Lake Havasu High School, and they graduate with their Lake Havasu High School peers. This represents less than 40 students because it's only looking at students who are there for the full academic year. So this really is focused on a group of juniors. And so we see Havasu Online students that are making the choice that they want to be online, and we, they're in an asynchronous classroom, and so they're really being self-motivated to do this. And so what we saw this year, they too also had 95% of students tested. Mr. Berger does an exceptional job ensuring that students come in to test. Their proficiency is 10.22. It's lower than the high school, which again, shows the importance of having a teacher in front of you. Their growth is 11.19. And again, it goes back to understanding the importance of having a teacher in front of you. They did get two bonus points, scored out of 50. They got, their final score was a 44.82. And so we've been meeting because we don't want a D letter grade for any reason. And so some of the things that we're working on, and I have been in communication with the state, both AD and the State Board of Education, we cannot make Havasu Online just a program of the high school. It's an AOI. It collects ADM a different way. It has to sit as its own school. So what we really want to do is ensure that our students are prepared to take the ACT. And so some of the things that we're working on doing currently, our brick and mortar students take an ACT MIMIC test six times before they take the ACT, one each semester, and then they look at the data. And so it's been given as an assignment for Havasu Online students, but students may not, or may or may not be taking it. And so we're going to freeze their classes, and they'll take the MIMIC just like if they were brick and mortar students. Currently, our Havasu Online students, they were testing just by themselves. We're going to bring them back, and they're going to test with all of their Lake Havasu High School peers. And so just having the same expectations of them than their peer group. The state does allow us, if a student does not take a state-required test, to put them back in brick and mortar. And so really ensuring that students understand that online is a privilege. We talked with the school resource officer today really around the issue of truancy and the way that the city attorney and city attorneys across the state are looking as online is a privilege. And so in order for students to be online and not go back to brick and mortar, they have to show passing grades and that they're really logging into their classes. And so we are really focused on ensuring that our students are doing that. Our handbook before us had a lot of Mayes, and they're going to have more Wills. And so really, holding our students, Havasu Online students can come to our dances, our assemblies, participate in sports, do all the amazing things that our students do. And so if students want to do this choice, we also need them to prepare for the state assessments that we're required to give. Here's our historical letter grades from 2017. The story, if you look at them, really tells of the incredible work that our staff and our school leaders have done. In 2017, we had one A. In 2018, we had three. 2019, four. 2024, 2021, there was no assessment. It was like we started over. Again, we had one A in 2022, four As in '23, to five As in 2024. I looked all the way back under this current assessment. I had to look back to AIMS, if anybody remembers that test. We have not ever had five As. It was 2012, and it was a different test. So our staff and our leadership and our students really are digging in to ensure that they're successful, and we expect. And we're working toward continuing to improve our letter grade, knowing that it shows what our students are able to do at each grade. That's it.
All right. Thank you for your fine work on all this. Is there some discussion or response?
Well, first of all, congratulations to our schools for doing such a great job. It's nice to see so many As and Bs. And even with the C, I mean, I always think of what do parents think? What do the students think? What do the teachers think? Because a lot of times, you know, we've seen elementary schools especially, they tend to toggle between As, Bs, and Cs. But if you ask the parent, well, what do you think about the education that your kids are getting? They like their kid's teacher. They like their kid's friends. They like the things that their kid is actually learning in school. And so just because a C shows up on a report card for that school doesn't mean that the family necessarily feels like their child is getting a C experience. That's usually not the case. They're usually very happy with what they're receiving. And I think this year reflects a lot of hard work from our schools to be in that AMB range. As far as Havasu Online, I am very encouraged to hear that you have an action plan for how to bring up that grade, because our online programs really do serve a segment of the students who need to have that online option. A lot of children, you know, they're 15, 16, 17 years old, and some of them are working not just because they want to have extra cash, but because their families are really dependent on them being able to chip in financially to their homes. I actually talked to one student who was in that exact situation earlier this week. And so he's very grateful for the online option. It's not just a luxury for him. It's an essential. And I'm glad that we are able to provide that for students, but we also need to make sure that they are graduating and be able to be just as competitive as their brick and mortar peers. So I'm glad about the fact that they're going to start taking their tests in person. I think that all by itself will do a lot towards improving those scores because people just tend to take a test more seriously when they're actually in a group with other people. So thank you for the action plan, and thank you for the report.
I want to make a few comments, too. Just like Lisa, I'm very glad to hear the action plan that's going on for both Thunderbolt and online. Online is always something that is kind of new. You know, it's not that online hasn't been around, but it's, you know, since COVID, it's really had more emphasis. And I think a lot of schools are struggling with how to kind of wrap their heads around and specifically get their students more support in those online situations. So I think that's good, that that's a real good area of emphasis right there. The other thing I just wanted to point out is, those are some awesome growth numbers, you know, and digging down on those. And where growth comes in are kind of two things. It's experienced teachers and familiarity with curriculum. We're in the stage now where we've had our curriculum consistent for a few years. Having consistent curriculum and master teachers, a lot of our, you know, award-winning teachers who do the extra, you know, certification there are really making a difference for these students. We've talked before about these grades. It's very hard to keep consistent grades. It's because, let's say you have a good growth year. Well, now all these students are up in this area. Harder to get them to grow. And so the tendency is to drop back. Everybody, you know, okay, you get an A this year, but then it's a B the next year, but then you grow back and do this. So those consistent As are really something to applaud. And once again, good job.
I did have one more thing. So going back to when we were talking about, I believe it's 81% total at the beginning of kindergarten year, the students that we receive are either below reading proficiency or very well below reading proficiency. So that's 81% of the students that we receive at the beginning of the kindergarten year. And so this is really just more of a commentary on how important it is to provide preschool opportunities for students. I know that that's a hard thing to find in the city, either because there aren't openings or because the cost is prohibitive. So I hope that encourages our board and our community to be supportive of preschool opportunities as they present themselves in the future.
Kyle, did you want to say anything?
Kyle, the other? I'm sorry, I could hardly hear. What was that?
We were just asking if you had anything to add.
No, I definitely think that the improvement has been very good. You know, my son is actually involved in the online curriculum and has actually been taking online school, and is on schedule to graduate here in May. It's provided opportunities with that for him to go to some of the career education courses at MCC. And actually, it's setting him up for a career in welding, and it's provided great opportunities. I think we've set a good path forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it progresses into the future and how we can continue to improve.
All right. Moving on to 6.1, student achievement. LHHS, new course offerings for '25 and '26.
Madam President and Governing Board, Lake Havasu High School is proposing to add the following classes to their course catalog for the '25-'26 school year. First, we're proposing to add the following online dual enrollment classes that will be taught by MCC faculty in an asynchronous format. Lake Havasu High School students will have a scheduled study hall during their day to work on these dual enrollment courses. These courses typically use open educator resource materials, so there's no cost to the students or LHUSD. The courses are, so again, MCC faculty, they'll get both MCC credit and Lake Havasu High School credit. These classes are dual enrollment environmental geology and natural disasters with lab, dual enrollment introduction to astronomy with lab, dual enrollment physics I with lab, dual enrollment physics II with lab, dual enrollment music appreciation and literature of music, dual enrollment computer introduction to computer information systems, dual enrollment humanities I, gods, myths, and empires, dual enrollment introduction to sociology. The following dual enrollment courses will be taught by LHUSD staff who are qualified to teach at the community college level. These courses typically use open education resource materials, so they are no cost to the students or LHUSD. So the dual enrollment courses that will be taught on campus by LHUSD staff who are qualified will be dual enrollment art 121, drawing I, dual enrollment ceramics I, dual enrollment calculus with analytic geometry I, and dual enrollment calculus with analytic geometry II. The addition of these MCC courses will make it easier for students to obtain their AJC, Arizona General Education Curriculum, while still in high school. The AJC transfers is the lower-division courses that typically make up the freshman year at all three Arizona State universities. In addition, Lake Havasu High School is adding CTE Emergency Medical Services III and CTE Emergency Medical Services IIIIV. They're being recommended to be added to the LHHS course catalog. New CTE courses will be taught by certified instructors with the Lake Havasu City Fire Department. CTE Emergency Medical Services III and CTE Emergency Medical Services IIIIV will prepare students for careers as emergency medical technicians. Students who complete the course will receive their EMTV. EMS is considered one of the highest need careers across Arizona and in Lake Havasu City. These courses will be funded through a joint partnership for WAVE and the city designated for CTE programs. And so the last course, the CTE course for medical, emergency medical services, like our fire services, this class was created jointly by Ms. Becker and the fire chief to meet a community need.
All right. Do we have a motion for this or any discussion?
I'd like to make a few comments on this. As you know, this is probably near and dear to my heart, and especially with the changing higher education, you know, the above 12 landscape. I do have some mixed feelings about some of these courses, just in the fact of, you know, how good are these going to be online? If I'm looking at the online courses, I know it's a changing environment, and our students don't have those opportunities here. However, just like the online high school, I am worried about support. I'm worried that students who are doing the labs online aren't getting a great experience with that. But I also know that without that, they don't have the opportunity because we can't get a physics instructor here in town. So what I am really kind of wanting to make sure is that we, kind of like we do with the online high school, really figure out how to service these teachers or these students. I know that they'll be in a online situation where they have a study hall and they have somebody in there. But in general, students struggle in college with the online for the same reasons that they do there. I'm just worried, and not worried in a way that I don't want to go through with this, but worried in the way that we really need to watch this. We really need to kind of watch it and see what's going on. The students who are STEM-focused, they're going to be at a disadvantage not having a physical lab. Not to say that some labs cannot be done virtually, but, you know, once again, where's the opportunity? You know, it's either they don't have it, they have it online. So also, in thinking about down the road, maybe this is a stopgap if we do find that physics instructor to do dual enrollment on the campus and do those types of things. The other concern I have is with this, it's typically, you know, open resources. Can we say for sure they're all not going to, they're all going to be open resources and not a cost to the student? Because then we're talking about, you know, how do we deal with that? So getting a little bit more clarity that they are open resources, that it would be no cost to students, or figuring out how the school district would kind of allay those costs would be something I would really look for for those online classes. I really like that we do have some dual enrollment courses that we are finding teachers for. I don't, I don't have an issue with that because, you know, I think those, these students really need the teacher for those high-level honors courses. So I support this with some misgivings, but, you know, I just wanted to point that out so we can move forward and have a lens on that going forward.
Can I add a little bit of context to that? So every course where we had someone qualified, we have on ground. The courses where we didn't have someone qualified, we did in partnership with MCC, and we've worked very closely with MCC to have this. As for the science courses, so MCC offers their courses down to eighth grade these days to homeschool students. And we see this happening in some of the other communities in Kingman and Bullhead City, and really in meeting with MCC and Mr. Becker, what I said, and I pulled up our proficiency data, and I said, that's lovely. Our proficiency data for our high school doubles what some of the proficiency data is in our outlying schools. We're not willing to just farm out our math instruction or our English instruction. And so the science classes, students would have to be juniors. They would have to have completed chemistry and biology on ground before this would be open to them. We did not want to go any lower. Whereas music appreciation, the humanities, you know, those are, those are courses that potentially sophomores who are qualified, who meet those requirements that are in there could take. We have some teachers who will be eligible to teach for MCC under the new Higher Learning Commission. It allows five years as teaching AP. So we have some teachers who will come for eligibility in the next couple of years, the next year or two, in some of the areas in biology and chemistry. And so we want to add more of our teachers as our teachers are eligible, because they have to be eligible for community college instruction, not just for us. And that's really where that physics is missing. And so that is an area of focus for us to bring on more of the lab sciences, especially as they meet those HLC requirements. And then as far as cost, we've never charged students for textbooks. We've always We've always provided them. And so that's always been on us. We, we've worked closely with O E Rs throughout the years with M C C them.
Thank you.
And then just as a follow up question. So the dual enrollment courses that are taught by M C C faculty, but that the students are receiving that information online, does that mean that there is someone local who is teaching physics and it's just the child is not going over there? Or is it, is it like a course that they're downloading from somewhere else or?
So it's the M C C physics course, but it's asynchronous. So yes, there's an M C C professor. Typically, and we see this at the community college level, they're not able to have a physics teacher, you know, a physics and physics instructor here and in Kingman and Bullhead. So they may have a physics instructor and I don't, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but that services the M C C population throughout. And so yes, it's a physics instructor that's creating the course, carrying out the course. But it's not necessarily on ground in Lake Havasu. It could be on ground, typically it's somewhere in Mojave County, but, but that course is all online for M C C.
It could be an adjunct as well.
Yes.
At a different, you know, just somewhere else in the country, but they have availability online. There's not generally a physical availability.
I guess what I was wondering about is the opportunity for students to receive tutoring if they needed it. If, if there was someone in person in Lake Havasu who was teaching this, that'd be ideal. But if, if there isn't, M C C might have a way of providing support to their students. In fact, I can't imagine that they wouldn't. And so maybe our students would be able to take advantage of that as well.
Generally, the, the professors have, you know, online office hours. You know, it depends on the course, but when you're talking about some, something like, you know, physics or astronomy, it's probably only the professor that can be available. There's not going to be too many student tutors that are available at M C C. So that's one of the concerns with it being online. You know, can our students handle that? And that's something to kind of, I think, really watch and see what we could, you know, do to engage that and, and support that.
I think we're kind of on the same page where, you know, we want to offer these programs. We wish that it could be totally in person, but since that's not possible, this is what we have to work with. And it certainly is better than leaving, you know, sort of a gaping hole where A S U used to be for our students. I read, well, actually I attended a counseling advisory meeting earlier today and they were talking about how last year, there were only seven or eight students who participated in the STEM bundle that was offered at A S U. And then this year.
Thirty.
They said, yeah. So it jumped up a lot, kind of hoping that that was word of mouth, that the students who took it that first year had a good experience and told their friends about it. But I'd hate to see that just wither away, especially for those harder sciences and the higher level math. This is an opportunity to offer that and so I hope that continues. And one more thing, I, I am very glad that a lot of these classes would fulfill the requirements of students to go on to college. So it fulfills a lot of those Gen Eds. And if you've ever talked to a college student, you know that, that one of the things that they often complain about is the fact that they have to spend money taking a Gen Ed class that doesn't really help them towards their major and they didn't want to take in the first place. And so I'm really glad that we're able to offer this at no charge to the students so that they can get those completed and kind of have a head start in college.
And also, because you know, I'll talk about this forever, I won't, I promise. But you know, that's a big savings for both the student and their parents. You know, graduating, I have two girls and they're both, they get to go in as sophomores, which means not only do they save a year's worth of tuition, but they get better parking because they're registered as sophomores. They get to register early because they're registered as sophomores. Lot of perks aside from the, aside from just the, the cost savings.
Kyle, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, not at the time.
All right. Do we have a motion for this?
I'll move to approve 6.1.
I will second.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
All right. 6.2 Business Services Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, vouchers and auxiliary funds for October 2024 and K-12 Student Activity Funds year to date are presented, being presented to you tonight.
I move that we accept 6.2 as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
Eric Garone?
Yes.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
All right. Do we have any information from our superintendent, Dr. Stone?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, you heard about the portrait of a graduate that our community really came together and developed. They are working at this time on a statewide portrait of a graduate and currently we are the only rural school at the table. And one of the things they've asked us to do is survey our community as to what they would be interested in as a statewide portrait of a graduate. So that will go out. And we're hoping, I've shared this at other meetings, but we're hoping many of our community members choose to participate as it's very important. And our families can work with our students to also share their voice in that conversation as well. For our parents, this Thursday at Lake Havasu High School, if you have a junior or a senior, they can participate in the College Career and Beyond Fair. It's during their social studies class, so you would need to ask questions when they come home about what they learned, but we have our recruiters from all military sections. We have local business, Advantage Windshield, Anderson Toyota. We also have our first responders, fire department, police department, county jail. We also have things like Arizona Game and Fish, Arizona at Work. We also have things like Border Patrol and other things that our students might be interested in. So we're hoping they get some great information and can have those conversations at home to figure out, you know, what, what is your plan moving forward? And you have some time to think about that. And finally, election season is over. So I would like to congratulate our newly elected board members who will be officially seated in January. So that's Evelyn Tinsley and David Rose and Matthew Houston.
Thank you. All right. Did the governing board members have any information for, for us tonight?
Just a, I'll do a short recap of that counseling advisory session that I attended. So they talked a lot about major clarity and the impact that that has had for students. And it's a program. It starts as early as eighth grade, but it helps students develop an education and career action plan. So it lets them take an interest inventory. It lets them take like a personality test and that sort of thing to help them kind of refine what they might want to do after high school and help them determine what kind of classes they should be taking at high school to promote that. And then the other thing I wanted to say, speaking of high schoolers, is that I noticed that we have some students in our audience and as always, you are more than welcome to come up afterwards if you have any questions, but thank you for being here.
Great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Yes.
Eric Garone?
Yes.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.